Good morning. Welcome to our City Commission meeting. We're going to open with a prayer from Pastor Delwyn Williams of St. John Missionary Baptist Church, followed by the pledge led by General Queen. Please rise.
Morning. Shall we pray together? Oh, God, you have been our help in ages past. You are our hope for years to come. You're our shelter from the stormy blast. And, God, you are our eternal home. We thank you for the majesty of you in this morning. And we're able to rise in a place where individuals would call a vacation destination and we call it home. We thank you, our God, for all that we're able to witness and all that we're able to see. And thank you for allowing us this opportunity to come together and then worship and honor you all the more. In the mighty name of your son, we pray your blessings on our gathering together today, that you might be able to let this your government rest upon your shoulders, that we might be able to do everything acceptable and pleasing within your sight, so that you can get the glory in the end. In the mighty and magnificent name of Jesus Christ, the Son, we say, "Thank you, Lord," and we give you all of the praises we invoke your presence into our gathering today. It is so, and we thank you and we praise you. And all the people said, "Amen."
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Jan, would you call the roll, please, ma'am?
Mayor Bernicki.
I'm here.
Commissioner Street.
Here.
Commissioner Halagus.
Here.
Commissioner Brown.
Here.
Commissioner Rader.
Here.
Mayor, you have quorum.
You have the minutes from the May 24 meeting. Have a chance to read those minutes. Any additions, deletions, something that's not there that should have been put in there? If not, entertain a motion to accept the minutes as presented.
Yes, Mayor. I've read the minutes pretty thoroughly, and they look fine to me. So I'd like to move approval of the minutes to the City Commission meeting of May 24, 2022.
Second emotion, Mayor.
Call roll.
Commissioner Street.
Yes.
Commissioner Halagus.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Yes.
Commissioner Rader.
Yes.
Mayor Bernicki.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Are there any additions, deletions, or modifications to the agenda?
Only the clarification on item 7D, which was provided in your packets this morning, which is the...
The updated appraisals?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. The countess never get any recognition, I know. Diane Butler began serving the citizens of Panama City on June 16, 1997, as the accounts payable clerk in the accounting department, the position she faithfully serves in today. Diana is an invaluable member of the city's accounting team. Her knowledge of the accounts payable process, vendors the city uses, and of the city overall, along with her years of experience, are relied upon daily. She is dedicated to her job and to serving the city. Thank you, Diana, for these 25 years of dedicated service to the citizens of Panama City. Employees like you are treasured and valued. We honor you today with this 25-year plaque. You know, I celebrated 25 years yesterday. My business, they didn't give me nothing. Okay, the Board of Trustees for the supplemental retirement plan for designated general employees has two positions for four-year terms that expire on July 22, 2026. Please be advised that Mr. Henry Hooks has enjoyed his time on the board, but has recently begun spending more time traveling as a retirement. He feels privileged to have served, but is yielding his position on the board. Tim Prather enjoyed his time at the board, but does not wish to retain his position on the board. Board consists of five trustees. Two members of the board shall be appointed by the Panama City Commission. Two shall be members of the system elected by the majority of the general employees, who are members of the system. The fifth member shall be chosen by a majority of the previous four trustees and serve a two-year term. Each resident trustee shall serve as trustee for a period of four years. It's a very responsible position. If you're interested, please contact the city. Planning Board has two positions for two-year terms that expire on June 26, 2024. Please be advised that current members Ray Dubuque and Mr. James Barker have expressed their interest to remain on the board. The Clerk's Office has received two applications that are attached to this agenda. Panama City Planning Board is the city planning agency and acts in an advisory capacity to the City Commission. Planning Board holds public hearings on all proposals to change land use and land development regulations, as well as variances and exceptions to the Land Development Code relating to signage and other matters. The Board makes recommendations to the Commission regarding adoption and amendments of the comprehensive plan, annexation of property, and requests for conditional use of property and zoning changes. Land Use Department prepares the agenda for Planning Board meetings. Now, is there... Okay, so what, do I hear any recommendations or from our constituents?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I would like to represent Mr. Ray Dubuque, sorry. And to extend his time, if he will choose to choose, he did doing a great job so far. We'd like to continue.
All right, I hear a motion for Mr. Dubuque. Do I hear a second? Okay. Any other discussion? Call the roll.
Commissioner Street.
Yes.
Commissioner Halagus.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Yes.
Commissioner Rader.
Yes.
Mayor Bernicki.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
You got applause out there.
Okay, do I hear any other...
You have done a great... I cannot believe how long you've been on there. Thank you for continuing to do that. And I, yeah, I'd like to nominate, because I've done it before. Last time, James Barker, to remain on the board as well.
Okay. Hear a motion for Mr. Barker? Do I hear a second?
Second emotion, Mayor.
Okay, any other discussion? Call the roll.
Commissioner Street.
Yes.
Commissioner Halagus.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Yes.
Commissioner Rader.
Yes.
Mayor Bernicki.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
We appreciate other people applying for that position. Stay with it, stick with it, and if there may be something else in the city you can do, if not now. Thank you. We have an appointment. The Panama City Housing Authority has one position for four-year term that expires on June 12. Please be advised, the current member Laura Murphy has indicated her desire to remain on the board. The Clerk's Office has not received any applications for this board. So do I hear a motion for Ms. Murphy?
Yes. If she's willing to stay on the board, pardon me, I'd like to nominate her.
All right.
Second emotion.
Second. Any other discussion? Call the roll.
Commissioner Street.
Yes.
Commissioner Halagus.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Yes.
Commissioner Rader.
Yes.
Mayor Bernicki.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Okay, we have appointments to the Infrastructure Certax Citizens Committee. This has three positions for two-year terms that expire on December 31, 2023. Two of the current members, Mr. Vic Jones, Commissioner Nichols' appointee, and Mr. David Smith, my appointee, has expressed an interest in retaining their positions on the committee. Clerk's Office was unable to reach Commissioner Brown's appointee, Ms. Carla Houston, to gauge her interest in remaining on the committee. Clerk's Office received one application from Mr. Tim Fontaine to go on the board.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to have a little comment on Mr. Fontaine. When I saw his name was on the list, I called him. He was up in Georgia fishing. He sent me pictures of the fish. And I'd like to recommend that he come in and he'd be my appointee.
Okay. Hear a second?
Yes, I'll second that motion.
All right. Any other discussion? Call the roll.
Commissioner Street.
Yes.
Commissioner Halagus.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Yes.
Commissioner Rader.
Yes.
Mayor Bernicki.
Yes, ma'am.
Motion passes five zero.
Okay, community announcements.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I think we need to consider the other two, because they're up for reappointment as well.
Oh, getting ahead of myself. Okay. So do I hear a motion on Mr. Jones and Mr. Smith?
So, Mr. Jones and I are supposed to meet this week. We haven't gotten a chance. He's been out of town. So I think if we can just wait one more meeting, we'll be able to...
Okay. What about Mr. Smith?
That's your appointee. That's yours.
Right. So do I hear a motion on... I would love to have Mr. Smith stay on the...
If that's... Yeah. You want to make a motion.
If that's what you would like, it's your appointee.
All right.
All right. So did somebody make a motion?
I think he did.
Okay, I'll second that motion.
All right, any other discussion? Call the roll.
Commissioner Street.
Yes.
Commissioner Halagus.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Yes.
Commissioner Rader.
Yes.
Mayor Bernicki.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
All right.
And we'll defer Mr. Jones until next week.
All right.
Until the next meeting.
Okay, the City of Panama City hosted its inaugural Asian American Pacific Islander Heritage Festival, Discover Asia, on the 21st of May, with a host of live music and dance, authentic cuisine, and martial arts demonstration. Plans are already underway to make this cultural celebration an annual event. The second annual Memorial Day Kids Cook-Off took place May 28 in McKenzie Park as part of the Red, White, and Q Barbecue Competition and Fundraiser. Nineteen children in two age categories competed for bragging rights to see who could present the tastiest hot dog, hamburger, and side item. All right. Minority PC in the City of Panama City co-hosted movies in the Neighborhood June 3 at the Millville Waterfront Park. This event had giveaways, pizza, and featured Disney Pixar's animated comedy Soul. Panama City Police Department announced the newest addition to the force. June 6, K-9 Officer Copper, badge 2222.
Where's Todd?
Copper, a 12-year-old beagle puppy, will be trained to detect narcotics.
Mayor, don't you remember Todd and Copper? Surely you remember Todd and Copper, the dogs, in that movie? Never mind, I'm sorry. Y'all lighting up this morning, come on.
Twelve-week-old puppy. I probably do. I just can't remember it now.
We were kids. Sorry.
During this year's Juneteenth celebration, Minority PC, the City of Springfield and the City of Panama City, invite you to join us for Movies in the Neighborhood. This year's final family-friendly movie takes place at Henry Davis Park in Glenwood, June 24 at 8:00 p.m. For more information about this and other Juneteenth celebration events, visit our website at panamacity.gov. Calling all teens, our next Teen Tuesday Paint Night takes place June 28 at the Panama City Center for the Arts. Join us on the last Tuesday of each month to create step-by-step canvases, co-hosted by Palmetto Paint PC. Admission is free. The fun begins at 6:00 p.m. Parents, you are encouraged to participate with your child. We're taking it back to nature this summer with sunrise and sunset yoga beginning June 29. This year, the City of Panama City is teaming up with Florida Blue to connect mind, body, and soul in a relaxing green space. For more information about this nine-week program, go to panamacity.gov. Downtown Panama City comes together once again on Monday, July 4, for an incredible day of music, patriotism, and fun to celebrate the birth of our great nation. The Salute to Freedom Festival kicks off at 2:00 p.m. and Downtown Panama City boasts live music, vendors, food trucks, and more. This year's parade launches at 5:00 p.m. From 8th Street, music headliner Dozy takes the stage at the Destination Panama City Visitor Center at 7:30. Finally, at 9:30, settle in on your lawn chair and enjoy the best view in town during the spectacular fireworks display sprawling over historic St. Andrews Bay. Next, we have audience participation. You have the... We have a list here, and so Jan will call your name. Come up, you have three minutes. Give your name and your address for the public.
Derek Thomas.
Morning, Derek Thomas, 1100 West 10th Street. I noticed outside at your front information desk, you have this invitation to contractors for a housing program. Hoping that's what it seems like it is. I know that a lot of people that are in, have code cases, code enforcement cases against them, are elderly, are living on a fixed income. Some of them have health problems. For the pool thing I brought up months ago, I estimated it would have cost about $2,000 to abate the problem and make it safe for everybody. And right now, they're at about $35,000, $40,000 in bail fines, and it still hasn't been abated. But it could have been abated months ago. So if there's a case opened up against somebody... I'm not a social worker, but if there is somebody from the housing program for the... Works for the county, who could potentially provide some assistance to them so that they could get the problem abated immediately, and we wouldn't have to, you know, put up with it as a community. It wouldn't be a danger to the public. Their pool, they said that it was near an elementary school. There's an elementary school on 19th Street in the city land with a big retention pond. It's about 50 times the size of a swimming pool. There's no fence around that. There's two fences around the playground where the, you know, elementary school students play. But it's, you know, right there. Anyone walking down the sidewalk could potentially fall into the retention pond. It's not that big a deal. There's going to be open water everywhere, and anybody could, you know, go to the beach and drown. So it would be good, I think, if there's an issue where somebody is having difficulty coming up with the money or finding a contractor or for whatever reason, the property, they don't have clear title on the property because it's in probate. Issues like that, where there could be a way for the city to assist the people in abating the nuisance immediately, then I applaud you for doing this, if that's what this is. Thank you.
Just so you know, you can tell your neighbor or wherever, rehousebay.org is the same, is where they would file to see if they could get some assistance from the city.
Yeah, I don't actually personally know the person. I tried contacting them. I tried to, like, hook them up with the people that I knew that were contractors that could fix it, but they never contacted me.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry. Michelle Newsom.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm not quite sure why I'm on the list.
But you're happy to talk.
I'll be happy to talk. I've got some things to say. This is in reference to annexing the property on, between Airport and Frankfurt. And we have...
Isn't that on the agenda today?
It is.
Oh, we'll talk about that when it's on the agenda. Thank you, dear.
I wondered, y'all calling my name, so here I am.
It's on the list. Okay.
David Smith.
Good morning. David Smith, 1070 East Caroline Boulevard, Panama City. First, thank you for reappointing me for another term on the Infrastructure Certax Committee. And like you, I want to see Panama City become the premier city in the Panhandle. We can't get from here to there unless everybody ponies up and pays their fair share. And you may know or not, but there are over 7,000 property owners that did not pay their property taxes this year. Enough to fill 40 pages of the newspaper. Over 2,000 back taxes owed on properties in Panama City alone. 1,300 in zip code 32401. We've got a problem. People aren't paying their taxes timely. What's the penalty for not paying your tax timely? Well, there's a nominal fee and a one-quarter of 1% interest. One-quarter of 1%. The business people on the council, you borrow money? Can you borrow at a quarter of 1%? The city borrows money. Does the city borrow at one-quarter of 1%? Absurd. Our interest rate on back taxes is so low. I met with a developer two weeks ago about purchasing some vacant land. And I saw that, hey, I see your name there in the paper. You hadn't paid your tax. He says, "No, I don't pay the tax. I wait till closing to pay the tax. Where else can I borrow money that cheaply?" So... Or the city demolishes the Buccaneer Hotel. And then one-quarter, 1% interest on that demolition cost is all we're charging? So how do we change this? First, I say, we don't do business with deadbeats anymore. You don't go before the zoning commission. You don't get a building permit. You don't get a contract with the city if you haven't paid your back taxes. And unfortunately, twice this year, they were planning board, their planning request, and one ended up with a zoning change, and that person had not paid their back taxes. So we granted a favor. We went from a commercial to MU3, and that person not paid their back taxes. So we don't do business. Secondly, stiffer penalties with interest. That we get that up from a quarter of 1%. And thirdly, let's have a wall of shame. Because when a restaurant can win best of the bay but not pay their taxes, that's shameful. When a hospital pays the tax only, via tax only on the buildings, but not on the 10 parking lots that surround that hospital, that's shameful. And so I ask you, in your upcoming deliberations, please consider stiffer penalties on back taxes.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
I like your thinking, but I think, Mike, isn't that mandated by state law?
State statutes.
State statutes. I mean, I think our hands are tied on those, on just about every one of those things. But obviously, it's... You make good sense with some of those things you said. Next.
Frank Sander.
I wish to be informed until 10 p.m. comes up, please.
And Tony Bostick.
Good morning, Mayor and Commissioner. Tony Bostick, 159 North Kimbrel. As you guys well know, back in March, I think it was, had an issue down at Vibes. There was a spillover from Panama City Beach. Vibes does intend to reopen, to bring that entertainment back to the community and to provide those taxes that they paid to the city, back to the city and the taxpayers. And as a part of that, some of the things that's going to happen with the reopening of Vibes is the age limit for entry is going to be raised to 25 to get rid of some of the younger kids that are doing things that you guys don't like and we don't need. Another thing that they're going to do is to redo their security team. Got rid of the old team. Obviously, it wasn't effective. And so they're reformulating the security team. Another one is to update the dress policy. No more sagging, no more t-shirts, no more backward hats, no more looking like you're looking for a fight. Another one that was part of the problem there, smoking inside the facility. Updating that to no smoking in the facility. Another one is amending the actual operating hours and the operating days, Thursday through Sunday. Another one is parking lot. Parking lot is just that, it's a parking lot. It's not a extended club scene in the parking lot. So no more hanging out in the parking lot. Just things to try to make it better so that you guys know that they are trying to work with you, trying to take what you had to say into consideration and make this a family-friendly or adult-friendly environment. Because I'm sure you don't want your kids to go there. But, and that's that. On a lighter note, thank you, thank you, thank you to City of Panama City Quality of Life. They teamed with Minority PC this year to host the Juneteenth events. We've had two movies in the park so far. Got one coming up on the 24th. We also have the actual Juneteenth celebration on the 19th over at Tommy Oliver Stadium, City of Panama City Quality of Life, and Bay District Schools team to host that, bring that to the community. And we'd like to invite everybody out there. And thank you, guys, for what you do.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
You're up.
Thank you very much, Mayor, Commissioners. First thing I want to say is that Nevin Zimmerman never gets to leave me with the largest agenda that's ever happened in the City of Panama City. Again, as his substitute lawyer, but we'll address that at our next firm meeting. Item 7A before you is the Change of Ownership Designation in Ordinance Number 3058, which is the Sexually Oriented Business Ordinance. It clarifies that change of ownership includes any time that the business itself, corporation, changes ownership. And this is a final reading of that ordinance.
Okay, do I hear a motion on 3058? Do I make a motion?
I'll second the motion. And I think it's important for people to understand, and they probably already have, do understand, but what this is saying, you know, is you're not grandfathered in. I mean, if you sell something to a new, they can't operate the same way. That's basically what we're saying.
The intent of the ordinance was that you couldn't sell all of your stock or membership interest in the business, the LLC or the corporation, and effectively sell your business that way. The intent was that whoever entered into those agreements back in the day were the ones that they agreed to it. There's the people that agreed to it. And so that was always the intent of the ordinance.
And I just wanted to make that clear, so people understand that. Thank you.
Commissioner Street.
Yes.
Commissioner Halagus.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Yes.
Commissioner Rader.
Yes.
Mayor Bernicki.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
I know you've already passed it. Derek Thomas, 1100 West 10th Street. I know you've already passed it. It also includes that any business closed over 90 days will also not be allowed to reopen. And after the hurricane, most businesses were closed over 90 days. So if there's no exemption for that, then it's kind of like you're saying that you don't want them, so you're going to shut them down. And when they die, they can't sell the business to their, you know, other people in the business if it substantially changes. But mostly the 90 days. Any time it's closed for 90 days, it's obviously been a hurricane or some kind of natural disaster. So that isn't included, that that exemption isn't included in there.
This only pertains to sexual...
Sexually oriented businesses.
There's nothing to do with that. Okay.
Read the ordinance.
Oh, thank you, pardon. Ordinance Number 3058, an ordinance amending Chapter 7 Business Licenses and Business Regulations. Article 3, Sexually Oriented Businesses, providing a clarification to change of ownership, providing a reasonable but certain winding down period which extinguishes current non-conforming uses, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict, and providing for codification, providing for severability, and providing for an immediately effective date. The next item, 7B, is Ordinance Number 3075, amending Chapter 17 of the Municipal Code for the Protection of Public and Private Rights. This is the first reading of this ordinance. This is the amending the sections of the Special Events Ordinance regarding pop-up events. And this is a first reading. An ordinance amending, it's Ordinance Number 3075, an ordinance amending Chapter 17, Protection of Public and Private Rights, separating into articles for easier interpretation, providing for definitions, providing for a more streamlined special events application process, providing which holiday special events are prohibited on, substituting the Quality of Life Department as the Department to obtain special event applications through adding a section addressing spontaneous unpermitted assemblies, repealing all ordinances in conflict therewith, providing for the... assemblies, repealing all ordinance in conflict herewith, providing for the severability of any part of the ordinance, uh, declared invalid, and providing an effect, an immediately effective You bet for those? Just move the first, first reading. Item seven C. This is a resolution number two-zero-two-two-zero-six-one-four-point-four. It's the delegation of authority to sign. This relates to grants, um, and other, um, applications received by the city so that once the commission has voted and approved the, um, app, or the grants or the applications, that the mayor, the city manager authorized, um, to sign those without having to come back to the city commission for another, another vote.
Your motion on, uh, resolution two-zero-two-two-zero-six-one-four-point-one.
I'd like to move approval, Mayor.
Second a motion, Mayor.
Discussion. Call roll.
Commissioner Street?
Yes.
Commissioner Halagus?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Rader?
Yes.
Mayor Bernicki?
Yes.
Motion passes five-zero.
Resolution number two-zero-two-two-zero-six-one-four-point-one, a resolution of the City of Panama City, Florida, delegating to the mayor of the City of Panama City authorities submit and sign grant applications and any related grant documents on behalf of the City of Panama City. Delegating to the city manager of the City of Panama City authorities submit and sign grant applications and any related grant documents on behalf of the City of Panama City, repealing all resolutions in conflict and establishing an effective date. Next item for you is seven D, and that is the request for approval of the property exchange for the city's purchase of four-four-seven Harrison Avenue. You have before you, uh, an amended, um, agreement, uh, which includes, it was sent to you last night, which includes an additional piece of property and also, um, increases the price that will be paid to, um, equalize the exchange.
Josh, don't you have something to say?
I think, I think, um, I'd just like to have some discussion, but, I mean, if we wanna do motions first, that's fine, or if we would like to have the dialogue first.
Probably didn't have the dialogue. It's healthy, right?
Well, I mean...
Well, I'm gonna move a motion to approve.
All right, I hear a motion, do I hear a second?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, now we'll talk.
Any discussion?
Yes. Okay. All right, so, I, I have no issues doing, doing the exchange or business with this particular individual or developer. There's no, there's no issues with that. But there were a couple things in the review, which we've been talking about specifically with Nevin and I and Mark. Um, one was on the requirement to actually build something. It is primor, it's primarily vacant land, um, and that, that is reflective upon the fact that this developer's never actually built anything in the city. They've only renovated properties. So, um, you know, what that is and what he'd like to build, or what that timeline is, I think is completely open to discussion. It's just what I wanted to see and what I communicated to Nevin was, hey, like, we need to make sure that there's teeth to this agreement that has a timeline, that they're willing to honor what they're saying they're wanting to do. So, that was one. The second was actually, when I got the appraisals on Friday, one of the things I noticed is we haven't updated on one parcel that happened in February, and then we have several parts of the appraisal that date back to August. So, so we've almost got a years and times on these parcels, and they were all evaluated separately. If you look at it in the full totality, it's a full block of the city's property. So, given appraisals and the way that they work, they work upon what's highest and best use, what can you do on the property, lumping them together changes that dynamic completely. And so, that was, that was the other component to it. The third one was just that, hey, this is one of the, this is one of the properties we're evaluating for the Civic Center, although, I know it's not high up on the list, it still has the potential to be one of them, and in four of the other ones, we have, we have to work with Mr. Kingston to secure those, those parcels and properties. So, to me, it would be like, hey, we kinda need to get all our cards on the table, because it's not just about this one. I'm for the cut-through, I understand the Dover Colle envisioning process, what they wanna accomplish there, um, but there's a lot of moving pieces that ultimately this block could come into effect. That, that was really where it is. My, my point is not to kill the agreement nor stop stuff from happening, but to make it better. And those are three things, I think if we address them, whether or not he's willing to agree to them, I mean, he's pretty much communicated to me, no, he's not willing to put the reverter clause in, and I know that Nevin and Mark have spent time with that, but never do a deal that you can't walk away from and come back and see if we can't work better together. Um, because it is important, and, um, I do think the cut-through's important, so I'm not against it. Um, I just think that there's a way to get a fair deal for the citizens and for all of us.
Any other commissioners?
What, yeah, is there anybody else that won't say anything? Are y'all just gonna let me talk, I guess? I, I will keep it short and sweet. First of all, Josh, you know how much I adore you, and I appreciate, actually, I think you brought some really good points. Um, I don't, I don't feel that way about this project, but I feel like we can learn from, from this project. Um, it's funny, because even streetscapes, you know, people wanted it, people didn't want it. Some people want to roundabout, didn't want to round. Some people want a clock, didn't want it. You know, there's always, there's always different ways to do things, or what people agree or what they disagree with, but I just wanna give the public a little bit of history. After the hurricane, when we had the Dover Colle, and of course, you know, we were all here, uh, that particular building itself was identified by these international planners that said, this is a, a huge opportunity right here, your block is too long, and part of the revitalization effort would be to make a better access gathering space. It's not, when you say cut-through, it kinda sounds like, you know, it's just for people, a sidewalk, but it's really large enough to be a gathering space. And so, um, so anyway, so that, that's where this came from, so I just wanna make sure everybody understands that. Over that time period, the city made an offer on francies. Um, we had like two or three appraisals done at the time, and we gave the best offer we could give that the citizens wouldn't think, like, you're just blowing our tax money on whatever, right? Because that was an issue at that point. Well, then Kingston made an offer, and he won the bid. Um, and so, that was that. And then, so we were like, okay, well, what could we, what could we offer? How could we work with him? And that's why the last year, I would say, and that's why the appraisal started about ten months ago, because we were trying to get, now, the reason why the appraisals have taken so long isn't because we're like, oh, we didn't want it to be worth as much, as much as it was the fact that it took a very, very long time to get those commercial appraisals back. The other thing that's kinda painful for the government is, like, we live and breathe on appraisals. Whether we think it was worthy, whether we don't think it's worthy, that's the only documentation we have that gives us that. Now, somebody, you had a good point when you said if all three parcels were together, would it give a different value? Maybe, but they're not, and they're separate parcels right now. Looking back, maybe if, you know, in the future, if we have other parcels and we wanna put them all together and go through planning and zoning and, you know, do all that, but that's kinda like me buying three houses in a row and saying, well, what would it be if it was all together and I changed the zoning to multifamily? What would it be worth then? You know, it's like, well, we, that's what it's worth now. That's what we know that it's worth now. So, anyway, I just wanna give a little history on that. Um, the other thing is, I think what came out of those posts yesterday were good conversations, not, but I think it did get skewed from the project. The project, I believe, of, everybody pretty much supports the project. I think what, what happened yesterday with the dialogue, which was good, healthy dialogue, was that maybe, instead of being so focused on this project that we focus on, okay, there were people were aggravated with vacancy issues and that we don't have any teeth when it comes to, uh, vacancy, uh, things which, uh, a friend of, of, of the city has helped us with some vacancy ordinances that I've sent to Nevin, uh, to try to get, try to get some teeth, and right now, the, the consequence of that wasn't big enough for me. Like, it needs to be something that would hurt me to pay if I had a building, so, you know, we, we do have those things in the works, um, and then we're leaning hard on code enforcement, and they're doing a really good job downtown, they can only handle so much. We lean on our magistrates to be, have teeth, um, not pointing any fingers out there, but no, just kidding. So, I just wanted to say, the other thing that, I know it's, this is not probably popular, but as a person who exchanges and sells and does real estate, personally, I wouldn't want a deed restriction on my property. If I was giving, if I was giving someone that property, I could put all the deed restrict, I wouldn't feel bad about that, but considering that we, at this point with appraisals, it's a fair market value to, that's just me and property rights, but that's my personal thing. So, how do we, how do we, how do we promote development? How do we promote people who are landowners to, you know, how do we incentivize them? How do we inspire them? How do we, I think that's more of our question here, and not so much about, and it's kinda hard for me, because the city's been sitting on that property for a really long time, with it actually looking rough. You brought up the Civic Center, and I didn't realize this, I thought that the Civic Center included Kingston seventeen properties and Mulberry, to be, not Mulberry alone.
Mulberry's one.
Okay, and I, I mean, you know, I didn't, I thought that kinda included his too, because a lot of people have talked about that, which obviously, we don't even know if he would be interested in selling that, but, um, okay, well, that, that's, that's also a different thing. So, anyway, I just wanted to say, I just, you know, I think that the other idea that came into it, so the only thing we're not getting is the deed restriction, really. Uh, that was the big thing, and then everything else is in our control, and this, this shouldn't be on one landowner, we should be hitting heavy with everybody in all of these areas that are not keeping up with their properties, okay? So, I just wanted to stay focused on what the point was, which is the project, and, um, and just kinda that. I think that was all I had.
Thank you for being, thank you for being brief.
Well, you know, you just wanna, oh, I know what the last one was. He, uh, some other, uh, input was, well, how about if he would agree to do some public space until he's ready to build on it? Which is what we're doing, what we're doing already on Beach Drive, with the five and a so acres he has there. We have a deal with him that we maintain it, and we use it for public spaces, open to our citizens, and Josh, I know you had a conversation with Kingston about that, I did as well. Um, it's not in writing, and I'm gonna learn a lot, this is a new relationship for me, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna try to, you know, try to work with all this, and he seems to be very open, uh, to that. So, we have a conversation that's gonna be set up in a couple of weeks to discuss public use of that property until he builds, so, that's all I got for you.
Anyone from the public wanna address us on this?
Walter P. Henry, six-fourteen May Barre New Panama City, Florida. We honor our commissioners, our mayor, everyone that's in, in the building. Y'all have all this in front of you. Where is four forty-seven located inside? I know it's somewhere between Fourth Street and Harrison Avenue. Yet I'm understanding, I just like to know where this, where this building is, either this piece of property that you're talking about. And I wanna understand why you've been saying you've been owning it for years, if you can't clean up your property, why, why you pushing us to clean up our property?
Amen, I agree.
It's not, it's not, uh, you know, it's something wrong with that. To me, it is. Might not be anything wrong to you, uh, you might be looking over to just closing your eyes and just not worrying about it. Whatever you want somebody else to do, you ought to do it. You're more able to keep your property straight than some of us citizens are. But we are forced, we are pushed to do things, and we are, I'm hearing, and I don't, I don't appreciate what I'm hearing, that you got a piece of property inside of the city, inside the main city, uh, Panama City, in this, inside of the old city town where everything used to be vellum, they was seals, pennies, bucklers, all of this, and, and then we can't, uh, we, I'm hearing, you, you had been, been filthy, dirty, not making it look good. It's down in town. Who wanted...
The, the building is fine, Mr. Henry, there's nothing to let, there's...
If you ain't, if you, if you're not painting it, or making it look, uh, detrimental to the other building that's, it's beside of, and you overlooking yours, and sometimes we overlook ours, but still, I, I, I make no difference to me. You, you, you can do better, and what I'm hearing, and why you gonna push other older peoples in this city that do things, are still finding a way that you can help them out to get their problems solved.
Thank you. I, I did wanna add, some people would like for us to still have, and I wanna put it on the record, that this piece of property, when we tear it down and we redo that, that we would leave opportunity for small retail so that we could continue like a P-three or let, you know, be creative and try to figure out so we're still gen, revenue generally. Just wanna put that on there.
I think I wanna end this discussion, uh, if there isn't anybody else who wants to address this from the public. You referred to, to Mr. Kingston as a developer, and, and I know when I started looking at this, I mean, he is a speculator and an investor. He doesn't develop. And so, when we go back and look at some of the history, I guess five or six years before I was elected, um, back in two thousand and five, I think is when he went back and bought his first piece of property. Not anybody else could have bought that property, but he took the risk. And I went back and did some research after I heard about this, and I thought, gee, you know, somebody has gotta be the person that started this, who's gonna assume that kinda risk? I think he paid a couple hundred grand more than what the person bought the property before him, and since that time has spent between three to four million dollars cleaning it up. Railroad ties and hotspots and all kinds of things. So, he doesn't develop, he is an investor and speculator. And so, I don't know how we can, all of a sudden, say we're gonna, okay, you're gonna get this, but then we're gonna make you turn into, to be a developer. You know, I guess if you put these properties together, it creates an opportunity for people like Allen Branch that develop, you know, people that have that vision, are the, you know, have the age to do those kinda things. I think this, Kingston's an old man, and I, I mean, seriously, I, I don't think that he's in the development business, but, um, we need this, as long as the values are there between what we're trading, and it's a good deal for the citizens, and it's a, a fair deal for him, we get our cut-through, I don't know how we can restrict and tell him, you gotta develop this property at a certain time, so, uh, I just thought I would, I would bring that up. So, nothing else, uh, can we call for a vote?
Mayor, I'd like to add, add one thing, and I totally agree with you, when you, you, you nailed it, when you said, he's an investor, and there are people that do that, and we live in America and you have a right to do that, and I don't know how we can dictate to say, you have to do this something within two, three years. Possibly you could, I don't know, we never have.
We'll forgive it to somebody and put whatever we want in it.
Right.
But what I, what I will say is, when we had the property, we, there was an opportunity, Publix came to us, if you remember, but it wasn't big enough. There wasn't enough land for them to operate on, you know, and that's, uh, I, if my memory's correct, that's a two-lane road right there at Beach Drive, going by it, right? So, you know, it, to have anything substantial, uh, it's gonna have to be four-lane, you know, and that's a lot of planning, but let's be honest about that. It's, it's a, it's, we all know where it's at, I'm just simply saying, and the other thing I wanna say, uh, Mr. Kingston has been, has been a good neighbor, uh, at the corner of Sixth Street, now I'm going back several years, so forgive me for this. Uh, it used to be, uh, a western warehouse shop, and I can't remember the name of it, uh, shoe shop, McGraw's?
Howard.
Whatever it was.
McGraw's, that was McGraw's.
Yeah, and, and he, we used that for a police substation, for a very nominal fee, when we had a real severe homeless problem. I remember the commission meeting room being packed, packed, back in two thousand and eight, nine, people just in line to talk about the homeless, you know, when there were hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of people being fed every day at the rescue mission. And so, uh, he helped us with that by allowing us to have a police substation there. I just want people to remember, yeah, it, we may not always agree with what someone does, but there has been some good things, and so, I...
Well, I just don't want people to get off focus. The point is, how did we, how can we get this project and make it happen? And if we could have made it with bells and roses and smell good, that would have been fabulous, but more, the most important thing is getting a hold of the vision and going after the goal of what we were trying to do, but we can be better. In the future, I think we can, we can be better, so...
Call the roll.
Commissioner Street?
No.
Commissioner Halagus?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Rader?
Yes.
Mayor Bernicki?
Yes.
Motion passes four to one.
Pardon me. The next item on the agenda is seven E. Uh, this is a consideration of approval of an amended right-of-way use by Trick Daddy Properties, which is doing businesses, history class... which is doing businesses, History Class Brewing Company at Sixth East, Sixth East Fourth Street. Um, and it's regarding sunshales, shade sales, that's hard to say. Um, the city is improving the East Fourth Street area. Uh, the owner currently has a right-of-way use agreement for that sidewalk on Fourth Street. Uh, because of the city's improvements, that use will be going away. So, the owner of History Class has asked that, uh, we amend the right-of-way agreement and switch it to the Park Avenue side of the, um, of their business on the backside, uh, so that they can put up tables, chairs, and some shade sales, uh, in that area, uh, and this is offered for your approval.
Y'all know I'll move a motion for this.
I'll second.
I, I would like to discuss it just real quick. Jonathan, thank you so much for pushing this past the finish line, and thanks to staff for getting this through, and I'm sorry for Trick Daddy Properties, y'all had to go through a process with us, and you're making us better. So, thank you for doing that, this is one other thing, small little thing, but it's also helping the revitalization downtown, so, thank you, guys.
Call the roll.
Commissioner Street?
Yes.
Commissioner Halagus?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Rader?
Yes.
Mayor Bernicki?
Can I smoke my cigars back there, Alan? Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
The next item, uh, is seven F, right-of-way use agreement with Eastern Shipbuilding and C W Roberts Contracting. The staff is recommending that city commission approve a right-of-way use agreement between Eastern, uh, C W Roberts and the city, and the agreement will grant a license to Eastern and C W Roberts to close portions of South Church Avenue and Nelson Street, which are adjacent to the, to their property, in order to enhance the security of their properties and provide for maintenance of the streets. This license will not be revocable by the city for a period, period of twenty-five years unless it's agreed to by the companies, and the agreement is necessary to prevent the security issues of the companies so they can be in compliance with their Coast Guard contracts. This also contributes to the sex, success and vitality of the commercial corridors, and the continued maintenance and upkeep of the right-of-ways by the companies is in the best interest of the public. Offered for your approval.
I'll move a motion to approve.
Second a motion, Mayor.
Any other discussion? Call the roll.
Commissioner Street?
Yes.
Commissioner Halagus?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Rader?
Yes.
Mayor Bernicki?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Similar to that, a right-of-way use agreement is seven G, which is a right-of-way use agreement with Suzuki Marine, USA LLC. The staff recommends that the commission approve the right-of-way use agreement between the city and Suzuki. The city will allow a portion of the right-of-way at the end of Frankfurt Avenue, the terminus, to be maintained by Suzuki, and the city will contribute up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the entrance of the facility at the end of the right-of-way, which will enhance security. This can, the city continues to be diligent in attracting economic development and job creation opportunities for the city. Suzuki is a strategic corporate citizen who opens international possibilities as the city strives to create a recreational boating research and development complex across the city and to take advantage of the existing recreational boating stakeholders to research, develop, test, manufacture, and maintain recreational boats of every kind and nature, which can be enjoyed locally and worldwide. Suzuki has the capability and interest to attract strategic partners who can provide benefits and opportunities across the city, and approval of the right-of-way use agreement will achieve this economic development incentive. It's offered for your approval.
Two wonderful economic development ordinances in a row. I mean, this is, this is a big deal, Panama City, uh, you know, it really is a big deal. And, uh, Eastern, we pray to God that they, they go past the four ships and get the next ten or eleven, whatever it is. Suzuki, highly technical, uh, business that, uh, really is focused on doing things in the future that will be phenomenal. Phenomenal for Panama City, and the other businesses that can come along with them. I mean, thank you all who fought so hard to, uh, to make these a reality for the city, because they are a big deal. They talk about the real diversification of our economy, and, uh, this is something that we need. We're not just a, a place for people to go visit on vacation, so, entertain a motion to approve this?
I will make that motion, Mayor.
I'll second.
Any other discussion? Call the roll.
Commissioner Street?
Yes.
Commissioner Halagus?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Rader?
Yes.
Mayor Bernicki?
Absolutely.
Motion passes five zero.
Item seven H is consideration of a lease for Beach Drive Properties LLC, Beach Drive Ho, PC Holdings LLC for the city, and the staff recommends leasing this property owned by Beach Drive Properties for, uh, to provide public functions and events for Panama City, such as the Fourth of July celebration. The lease will be for one year at no cost to the city, and will only require the city to provide maintenance and upkeep of the property. Uh, this is the property that the city has leased before, but in the meantime, or the intervening time, the owner has leased two parcels of the overall parcel, overall, overall parcel to a private individual, uh, which will require that in order for the connectivity between the destination Panama City parking lot and the event grounds, uh, that we enter into an agreement with the tenant of Beach Drive Properties for those other parcels so that the citizens can cross those parcels and, uh, enter the, uh, the event grounds. We are still working, um, with the owner of the properties to obtain those rights of access. Uh, we, uh, I got an email from Mr. Zimmerman this morning that said we are really close, it's just a matter of us putting this, um, on pen to paper. Uh, so the recommendation is that you provide authorization for the city manager to negotiate the final terms of the lease and allow the mayor to execute the lease without further commission action required, and that is due in large part because Fourth of July is fast approaching.
I'll move a motion to approve.
Second a motion, Mr. Mayor.
Any other discussion? Call the roll.
Commissioner Street?
Yes.
Commissioner Halagus?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Rader?
Yes.
Mayor Bernicki?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Consent agenda, we've got one item, um, I'm just, any discussion on that? If not, here a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Move approval of consent agenda?
Second a motion, Mayor.
Discussion, call the roll.
Commissioner Street?
Yes.
Commissioner Halagus?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Rader?
Yes.
Mayor Bernicki?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
General?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, I draw your attention to item nine A, which is a consideration of approval of budget resolution two zero two two zero six one four point two, and the proposal from Rep. Services Incorporated to, in accordance with the State of Florida contract CGC one five zero eight two two three for Sudeth Park Playground Equipment in the amount of one hundred and ninety-two thousand, three hundred and twelve dollars and sixty-eight cents. As background information, on June sixth, twenty twenty-one, City approved a bid, uh, which was properly received from Inland Construction and Engineering Incorporated in the amount of one million, three hundred and forty-seven thousand, sixty-seven dollars to reconstruct the Sudeth Park facility in accordance with the plans prepared by Panhandle Engineering Incorporated. The approved scope of work and supply did not include the supply and/or installation of the playground equipment. Uh, with that, it's a recommendation that we move forward with the proposal from Rep. Services Incorporated for the Sudeth Park Playground Equipment, scope which has been vetted by our Quality of Life Department. Additionally, uh, the funding from this will come principally from the sale of the land that was down the street, um, um, uh, from the Sudeth Park, uh, and the commitment was that those proceeds in the amount of one hundred and sixty-three thousand, eight hundred and two dollars would be, uh, attributed to directly going back into Sudeth Park, and that is in case the, that is indeed the case in this situation. The balance of twenty-eight thousand, five hundred and ten dollars and sixty-eight cents will be coming out of the general fund of the Quality of Life Department. With that, it's my recommendation, we move forward with the procurement of the playground equipment for Sudeth Park.
I'll move a motion to approve.
Second a motion, Mayor.
Any other discussion? Call the roll.
Commissioner Street?
Yes.
Commissioner Halagus?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Rader?
Yes.
Mayor Bernicki?
Definitely.
Motion passes five zero.
Item nine B is, I'm sorry, the resolution.
Read the resolution.
Thank you.
Resolution number two zero two two zero six one four point two. Resolution providing for the amendment of the approved fiscal year twenty, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two budget to use funds from the sale of property on Tyndale Drive to purchase playground equipment for Sudeth Park.
Thank you, item nine B is the consideration of approval of the Hometown Revitalization Program Business Facade and Building Improvement Policies and Procedures. As background information, in August of twenty twenty-one, the City of Panama City received a notice of intent to award letter from the Department of Economic Opportunity approving thirteen million, four hundred and seventy-eight thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars and twenty-one cents for funding for the Hometown Revitalization Program. These projects will assist business owners in low and moderate income commercial areas in their ongoing recovery process. The, um, uh, the, the business facade and building improvement, uh, projects will encourage physical improvements to the commercial facades visible from the public right-of-way. The four project areas which are included in this are on Harrison Avenue, Beck Avenue, Glenwood, and Millville. And as part of the grant agreement and to ensure compliance with all applicable regulations, DEO requires the development and approval of local policies and procedures for the Hometown Revitalization Program, uh, implementation. With that, it's, uh, attached is the, um, proposed, uh, policies and procedures relative to the program, and it's my recommendation that you, uh, consider, uh, approval of this.
Motion on nine B?
Motion to approve, Mayor.
I'll second.
Second or is it a call?
That was a call, sorry.
I'll second the motion.
I mean, I don't mind, I just.
Move staff, staff recommendation, second.
Any other discussion? Call the roll.
Commissioner Street?
I'm staying.
Commissioner Halagus?
Um, yeah, uh, yes, but I, I just have to ask, like, that, first of all, shh, I've done a lot of work on this, thank you, so I'm not gonna sit here and nitpick, but I just wanna know if, uh, you know, this is new to us, probably gonna run into some problems, we're gonna do some whatever, how difficult is it gonna be to amend some of this or change it? I mean, i- is it gonna be a pretty simple process, we can just come back here and do it, or?
Right, uh, so, um, we're very grateful to Governor DeSantis and Director Eagle, uh, for creating this. This has never been done in the state of Florida before, and so this is the first time it's ever been done, and so we're working hand and glove with DEO to create these policies and procedures so that it can be a model for other communities to use as they recover from disasters potentially in the future. Uh, with that in mind, I do anticipate there will be some dynamics that will take place, because a lot of it will be discovery learning, but we're trying to create the framework, uh, for all of the businesses to be fair and equitable in the distribution of those funds for the first round of funding that was approved. We anticipate there will be, uh, funding left over, and that we anticipate doing a second round and potentially going back and getting additional funds from DEO to help, uh, these businesses get their facades, uh, back up and running. This is not interior redesign, this is all facades, this is roofs, this is air conditioning. The envelope of the building, uh, is what this is all about, is not changing everything in floor plans and interior types of, uh, activities. Now, that can be coupled with it, but that'll be on the responsibility of the property owner or business owner to do that.
Well, first of all, from a government perspective, I think you guys turned it out pretty quick, so I'm impressed from that, but my concern, that's my only concern, is that we're gonna get in there and see where we've got some issues, and it's gonna take forever and that's it. So, I just wanna make sure we're aware.
We actually have a, uh, presentation for our, uh, applicants, uh, the ones that had registered for this program uh, when it was first, uh, revealed or unveiled from, uh, DEO. Uh, that'll be taking place tomorrow, uh, and we're gonna continue to inform and educate our applicants of the process. Uh, we think it's pretty tight, we think it's pretty close to what right looks like, there may be some slight modifications, and clearly, unless it substantially changes, I intend to make those changes internally.
That's what I was hoping, okay, good, all right, I'm good then.
If it's never been done before, you know it's gotta be tweaked.
Oh, sure, I'm just glad that you're gonna have the authority to do that, I didn't wanna have to keep coming.
Now, if there's a substantial change?
Right.
I will bring it back to your, uh, this commission for.
Something will come over.
Perfect, so that was a yes.
Uh, can I clarify your vote, Commissioner Street?
Yeah, it's abstain, same, same situation as it was last time.
Okay.
We had this sub-agreement come across our desk.
Madam Clark, I understand that he's already filed a conflict of interest form, if you'll just make sure that's spread upon the minutes for this.
Thank you, I just wanted to clarify.
Thank you.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Rader?
Yes.
Mayor Bernicki?
Yes, ma'am.
Motion passes four to zero with one abstention.
Item nine C is the, uh, consideration for your approval of the Liberty Phase Two Platte. As you know, this is, uh, in Panama City North off of Star Avenue. Uh, the subject property is part of a multi-phased plan that will have upwards to eighteen hundred homes that'll be developed in this. It's being, uh, produced by D R Horton, and, um, the applicant is ACCL Bay Properties Incorporated.
Motion?
Motion of acceptance, Mayor.
So, I could just, go ahead, if I may just make, is this, we need to, do we determine if the performance bond was needed on this?
They are, uh, yes, there is a performance bond that will be needed for the unfinished landscaping work and the work that needs to be done.
Okay, and it, so, it, your vote then is just subject to the acceptance of that performance bond?
That's right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Second?
I'll second with subject to the performance bond for landscaping.
Any other discussion? Call the roll.
Commissioner Street?
Yes.
Commissioner Halagus?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Rader?
Yes.
Mayor Bernicki?
Yes, ma'am.
Motion passes five zero.
Item nine D is the consideration to establish a standardized facility use agreement with sports organizations that provide athletic and sports programs to the City of Panama City. As background information, a request for a proposal, PC twenty-one dash zero one eight was advertised on September eighth, twenty twenty-one, and closed on October fourteenth, twenty twenty-one, and the city had four bidders with various services and are seeking to go into contract with all, and the city's seeking to go into contract with all four of those responsive bidders. Each contractor is noted in, that it is not to exceed seventy-five thousand dollars per year. With that, it's, uh, an exciting time to be able to partner with, uh, great organizations that are gonna help to be, be able to provide athletic and sports events for our citizens. With that, it's my recommendation, we move forward with accepting this, uh, facility use agreement.
Motion on nine D?
I'll move a motion for approval.
Second a motion, Mayor.
Discussion?
Tony Bosick, one five nine North Kimball. Uh, with this sports agreement, um, Minority PC hosted the Jackson E. Jones Little Major League Baseball Program this year. Now, with this agreement, are we gonna clarify, um, the ability of the organizations that's providing these services to the City of Panama City to use the, um, concession facilities available? Because the one, the one linchpin to all of this is that when you're over at Oakland Terrace, there's only one entity in the city that can use that concession stand, and all of the money derived from that sporting event goes to that individual or that entity. I don't think that's fair, right, or even smart, but yet that one, that one organization is the only one that can use the concession stands. When you have somebody that puts on a sports program such as Little Major League or softball, uh, program, how they, that's part of the way they raise funds to keep that program going. So, if you take away the concession stands, you do them a disservice. So, are we ever gonna get to the point where we say that whoever you guys allow to rent that out and host that program, that they have the right to that facility to, uh, generate those funds to help the program? Just a thought.
Thank you.
Thank you. I, I think would, well, you, you go ahead and sit down, but I, I can address that, 'cause I kinda got into it a little bit. Um, the, the problem is Oakland Terrace Men's Club's got about thirty to thirty-five thousand dollars in inventory in that place over there. So, logistically, it's gonna take some work to, to be able to try to figure out how to do that, 'cause they'd have to move all their stuff out of there, um, not real sure how that can take place, but it'd be tough. That's, that's the problem, is that, you know, all that inventory they've got there.
Yeah, concessions will be a separate issue, and I'd be happy to look into that and come back with a recommendation.
In the meantime, in the meantime, Woods Field is getting their sod, and their concession stand has been renovated, and will be open for use of whoever's using the field.
That's good.
James Barker, eleven twenty Harmon Avenue. I just wanna reiterate, and I, I see the problem with both of them, but I think it can be worked out. I agree with Brother Bosick, it's important that entities that are on the field have a right, uh, have a way to raise funds, and I understand Oakland Terrace, they've been there a long time, uh, I'm pretty sure that we can work together in unity to get this done, but it needs to be done in a unified effort, not just at Oakland Terrace, but any other park that we have. Everything should be the same, equal to any and all individual, wha- whatever park we have. So, I think that we can, I agree totally, especially since new entities come up all the time. All right, new, new facilities are opening, new entities are being a part of it. I think that we need to have a unified policy that everybody follows, and I appreciate that. Uh, and I understand the totality of, of being there for years and years and having your own inventory. Uh, maybe we can put a, uh, story shed on, on, on some of these properties where you can store things if you're gonna be there, like Oakland Terrace Men's Club's gonna be there for a while. We may can create a, a facility there where they, you know, and still have a private, uh, uh. uh, concession stand. I just wanted to reiterate that, we, I think this needs to be done, and I think it needs to be done quite efficiently and immediately, especially before next summer.
Call the roll.
Commissioner?
Please forgive me, I just wanna ask a question. I know this is almost uncharted waters, a lot of cities do this, uh, and it, it can be successful. I just have a couple of questions. We don't have an agreement as to far as the amount of funds we will pay this firm that we hire for the bid, however you wanna word it, whether it's, you know, a s- flat-out salary or, or if it's based on a, uh, commission thing or how many ball clubs they bring to town or whatever for tournaments, I'm sure it'd be a salary thing. But I'm just, you know, some of these things, I, I hope they're subject to change, and I, and I just, I'm, I'm, there's so many things to look at, but, but just from a softball standpoint, mayor, I, you might agree, you may not, uh, vendor shall provide a minimum of one umpiring. Sometimes you need two. I don't mean to be, to be nitpicky, but does that, you know, we've got a big tournament. Think about it. You play ball.
They're both blind, it don't matter.
Well, I hear you. I, I, I know you say that, Mr. Cubby.
Well, hopefully we're just leaving more flexibility.
I'm sorry, I just wanna, I, but there's a lot of, but there's a lot of unanswered here, I mean, and we're.
That's what everybody agrees to on that, I think that's.
But what, is anything gonna be brought back to us or not?
Uh-uh.
What, what is the budget?
It says no more than seventy-five thousand dollars total, and these are for all different local organizations. So like if you, it says like if you have like seventy-five, up to seventy-five players, then Quality of Life will sponsor twenty-five hundred dollars worth. If you've got a hundred and fifty players, I don't remember exactly what it is, but it's just that up to a certain amount. So you're right, that's exactly what, what you're concerned about is what, they put a cap on it and everything.
Thank you. I didn't mean to bring up just one little thing about that either.
That's good.
Can we call the roll first and then go ahead? Call the roll.
Commissioner Street?
Yes.
Commissioner Halagus?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Rader?
Yes.
Mayor Bernicki?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Call the roll.
Again, Walter P. Henry, six-fourteen Maple Avenue. Uh, I know some of these parks are small. Everybody, anybody ever thought about putting a competition building out there somewhere? Somebody might like somebody else's food better than they like the other one. Where it would be one that, one person, they can have that building, but somebody else said they need to sell another, come in to help their, help their program, have another building out there that nobody could not just one person be over. Two buildings, if it's, if the property is big enough to hold two buildings, uh, you know. Everybody don't like Golden Corral. Everybody don't like Red Lobster. But there's, somebody might like McDonald's or go, uh, better than, than know, do they have better food, but they'd rather have that. So they have something to choose from if you had two buildings, and that other part, that other person could profit as well as the one that y'all have already appointed this building to.
Thank you, sir. Excuse me. I'd like to move forward on item nine E, uh, which is a consideration of approval of Amendment One for the continued construction engineering and inspection services from Panhandle Engineering in the amount of seventy-six thousand dollars for the Liberty Development Area, Liberty Subdivision in Panama City North, which includes Phase One, Two, Three, and the Spine Road, uh, which is the Boulevard entrance. As background information, in January twenty twenty-one, the commission approved a task order for Panhandle Engineering to provide the CEI services for Liberty Subdivision as described in the amount not to exceed a hundred and forty-seven thousand, nine hundred dollars. Those funds were depleted in April of twenty twenty-two as this construction process, which, uh, was, uh, slower, uh, much slower due to the consistent bad weather, uh, through, uh, twenty twenty-one. Phase Two will not be completed until December twenty twenty-two, and Phase Three would not commence until November twenty twenty-two and not completed until September of twenty twenty-three. The multiple f- projects ongoing around Panama City and continued demand for CEI services, uh, contract support is necessary to ensure that projects are executed and constructed as expected and as required. With that, it's recommendation that we move forward and do change order, Amendment Number One, uh, in the amount of not to exceed seventy-six thousand dollars.
Motion on nine E?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to mo- make a motion of approval.
Second?
I'll second that motion.
Discussion, call the roll.
Commissioner Street?
Yes.
Commissioner Halagus?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Rader?
Yes.
Mayor Bernicki?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Item nine F is the consideration to approve the expenditure of budgets, uh, budgeted funds to ex- uh, expand the police department's vehicle fleet for four twenty-twenty-two Ford Explorers and three twenty-twenty-two Ford F-150s in the amount of eighty-one thousand, two hundred fifty-seven dollars and fifty-two cents for the current year and for the total amount of four hundred six thousand, two hundred eighty-seven dollars and sixty cents over a five-year period. Excuse me. Uh, as background information, the Panama City Police Department has a continuing need to maintain an operational fleet of emergency response vehicles that aid in the timely service and protection of the citizens of the city of Panama City. As performance of these services can take exact a heavy toll on the vehicles used, the maintenance and repair of those vehicles becomes a cost prohibitive. Uh, to ensure the police department can continue to provide the same standard of care for the citizens it serves, the purchase of the new vehicles on a rotating basis has become a necessity. These vehicles are being purchased and the necessary equipment and lights, uh, which is being pegged, piggybacked off of the Charlotte County, Florida, excuse me, uh, purchasing department's contract through five-year leases with a one-dollar buyout provided by Bancorp. Uh, this allows the department to appropriately budget for the funds each year, and with that, it's my recommendation that we move forward with the acceptance of this, uh, program for the purchase of vehicles for the, lease of the vehicles for the city of Panama City.
Motion?
Motion to approve, ma'am.
I'll second that motion.
Discussion, call the roll.
Commissioner Street?
Yes.
Commissioner Halagus?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Rader?
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor Bernicki?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Uh, item nine G is a consideration to enter into the contract negotiations with Half Associates Incorporated for the Comprehensive Drainage Robinson Bayou Project, which is a Hazard Mitigation Program number four-three-nine-nine-dash-one-zero-five-dash-R. As background information, the city advertised a request for qualifications on April eighth, twenty twenty-two, and received three responses from qualified engineering firms on April twenty-ninth of twenty twenty-two. The Robinson Bayou Evaluation Panel met on, in Wednesday, uh, May tenth, twenty twenty-two to determine the best engineering firm for this project. The panel discussed each RFQ proposal, and after careful consideration of all the firms, the panel selected Half Associates Incorporated as the most qualified engineering firm. The PMO staff is recommending approval for us to begin contract negotiations with Half Associates based on their extensive wetland work projects as outlined in their RFQ submittal. Their reference projects that they've completed were more in line with this project that we're undertaking, and the references were deemed to be more favorable for the work completed, and the environmental subconsultants are better suited for this project. With that, it's a recommendation that we move forward with the, um, agreement to enter into negotiations with Half Associates Incorporated for the Comprehensive, uh, Drainage Program for the Robinson Bayou Project. As a reminder, this is being fully funded through two grants, uh, seventy-five percent through the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program and the Community Disaster Block Grant for Disaster Recovery for the other twenty-five percent.
Motion on nine G?
Move approval. Second to motion, ma'am.
Discussion, call the roll.
Commissioner Street?
Yes.
Commissioner Halagus?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Rader?
Yes.
Mayor Bernicki?
Yes, and this is an amazingly big deal.
Motion passes five zero.
Yes, sir. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, with that, I move forward on item nine H, which is the consideration of approval of the Comprehensive Services for Panama City Maintenance Dredging for Lake Huntington Channel with Gator Dredging. Uh, the city of Panama City, Florida, uh, through the city's Public Works Department, solicited bids from experienced and qualified contractors to provide dredging activity at Lake Huntington Channel. Uh, with that, we received our, uh, low bid, uh, from Gator, uh, Dredging in the amount of one-hundred-and-eighty-four thousand, nine-hundred-and-thirty-five dollars. With that, it's my recommendation we move forward and award the bid, uh, award the contract to Gator Dredging in that same amount.
Motion on nine H?
I will happily. Thank you, Mark and team, for all your work giving us across the finish line.
I'll second that motion.
Discussion, call the roll.
Commissioner Street?
Yes.
Commissioner Halagus?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Rader?
Yes.
Mayor Bernicki?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Item nine I is a consideration of approval of bid from Vision Construction of North Florida Incorporated, also known as Vision, in the amount of one-hundred-and-thirty-one thousand, five hundred and forty-four dollars to provide demolition to the existing Martin Luther King Recreation Center building and authorize, uh, me as the city manager to execute a noticeable ward to Vision for the said scope of work. Also authorizing the mayor of the city of Panama City to execute an agreement with Vision after Vision has executed its, uh, portion of the agreement. With that, uh, as background information, on April twelfth, twenty twenty-two, sealed bids were properly received by the city of Panama City Purchasing Office, and Vision Construction of North Florida, uh, submitted the lowest bid in the amount of one-hundred-and-thirty-one thousand, five hundred and forty-four dollars. Uh, with that, it's my recommendation we move forward with the approval of this, uh, contract and, uh, awarding, uh, it to Vision.
Motion on nine I?
Motion to approve, ma'am.
Let me, let me second the motion.
Go right ahead.
Alrighty, you're welcome.
Discussion, call the roll.
Commissioner Street?
Yes.
Commissioner Halagus?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Rader?
Yes.
Mayor Bernicki?
Yes, ma'am.
Motion five, passes five zero.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, uh, following our first readings of, uh, the various ordinances, uh, this will be a public hearing. Uh, with that, I draw your attention to item ten A, which is the first reading of ordinance three-zero-six-seven-point-one, which is the voluntary annexation of point, uh, correction, of one-point-five-zero acres of property located at thirty-seven-fifteen Airport Road. As background information, the applicant has requested annexation into the city in order to utilize the city's services and develop the property into commercial use as a gas station. Uh, this item was reviewed by the Planning Board on May ninth, twenty twenty-two, and the Planning Board recommended approval unanimously. With that, it's a recommendation that we conduct the first reading of the ordinance, uh, uh, first reading of the request for annexation.
I wanna clarify something for everyone. We will not be voting on any of the next twenty-some-odd items. Um, today, it's, there's all first readings, but if you would like to address the commission on the issue, even though we're not voting today, if a public hearing is open on every one of these, throw your hand up, 'cause otherwise we're gonna be buzzing through this. Okay?
Did I read the title?
Yes.
Ordinance number three-zero-six-seven-point-one, an ordinance of the city approving the voluntary annexation of one-point-five-zero acres of unincorporated property located at thirty-seven-fifteen Airport Road, Bay County, Florida, into the city as further defined here and after, amending the wards and boundaries of the city to include said land and providing for an effective date. Item ten B is first reading of ordinance three-zero-six-seven-point-two, amending the future land use map of the city to reflect a land use designation of general commercial for the property located at thirty-seven-fifteen Airport Road. As background information, it's the same as I shared in the annexation agenda request, and as such, it's a recommendation we conduct the first reading of the ordinance. Ordinance number three-zero-six-seven-point-two, an ordinance amending the comprehensive plan, future land use map of the city to reflect a land use designation of general commercial for a parcel of property located at thirty-seven-one-five Airport Road, Panama City, Florida, providing for a repealer, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. Item ten C is first reading of ordinance three-zero-six-seven-point-three, amending the zoning map of the city to reflect a zoning designation of general commercial two, GC two, for the property located at thirty-seven-fifteen Airport Road. As background information, it's the same as I shared in the annexation amendment agenda request, and as such, it's a recommendation to conduct the first reading of the ordinance. Ordinance number three-zero-six-seven-point-three, an ordinance zoning a parcel of property located at thirty-seven-one-five Airport Road, Panama City, Florida, having approximately one-point-five-zero acres, general commercial two, GC two, providing for severability and providing for an effective date. Item ten D is the first reading of ordinance three-zero-six-eight-point-one, the voluntary annexation of fifteen acres of property at Frankfurt Avenue, parcel ID number one-three-zero-three-seven dash zero-zero-zero dash zero-zero-zero. Uh, as background information, the applicant is requesting to annex into the city along with a future land use and zoning change to develop the parcel into an apartment complex. This item was reviewed by the Planning Board on May ninth, twenty twenty-two, and the Planning Board recommended denial unanimously. With that, it's a recommendation that we conduct the first reading of the ordinance.
I think there is a, okay, this is a public hearing, so if you'd like to address this on this, this issue, come forward and state your name and address, and you have three minutes.
Hi, I'm Deanna Peterson, I live at two-zero-one-one Frankfurt Point Road, which is right in front of this property.
Could you pull your mic down so we can hear you? Thank you, thank you.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Don't mess, be too loud, can you be fine?
You're fine.
Okay, so what I have an issue with, and all the neighbors have an issue with, is the responsibility in planning good buildings that are gonna go in that property area. We don't mind single-family homes, but we do have a problem with three-hundred-and-four apartments in four stories with four-hundred-and-eighty parking places that are gonna be in that development. And currently Frankfurt Avenue has no infrastructure whatsoever, there's no sidewalks, it continuously floods, our new cul-de-sac has made our neighbors flood, so until infrastructure happens, then we need to, um, not even worry about putting in an apartment complex. But what we also have a problem with is the honesty on what's gonna happen to our, our families on Frankfurt and our families that are living on Airport. You guys are gonna wanna annex that property to put in a four-lane road, per Johnny Sims that has a contract with you guys. So, you know, you're gonna ta- take these people's homes and annex them to put in four lanes, 'cause that's what's gonna have to happen. Now, Mr. Sims does not make.
This is news to me that he, we had a contract with Mr. Sims.
Yeah, you were, you were there.
Well, I know, I, but I, no, he's, excuse me.
No, no.
I, I'm with you. I think you're, m- Mr. He was, he's with this other company.
No, I know, but he also has a contract with the city. Everybody can have a con- copy, I got it from your office.
Please, help me, I'm, I'm, I'm with you, you know, you know I'm with you.
He wasn't.
I was there, yes.
He used to be employed with us.
He's not anymore.
According to this, this, uh, was approved March eighth, twenty twenty-two. You have a, a contract with Bay Town Group, who Johnny Sims owns.
That's a continuing services contract.
Yeah, I know, but he doesn't mind telling us all that you guys are gonna annex those roads.
Oh.
So I want, I wanna point that out. I appreciate that, I have no idea. There is an NDA problem here. There is a, a problem with non-disclosure for city property. There is a problem with non-disclosure for said property.
None of us made that contract.
So we'll bring this up later.
I'm with you.
But, okay, okay.
Please note that.
I'm just saying, right now, we've got a problem with that. And the optics on this look really bad. We've got a problem with the flooding. We've got a problem with moving a commercial property that is slated for a single-family residence. And right now, we're passing out one thousand flyers to all of our neighbors to let them know of what's going on, so that they will show up in two weeks at the meeting.
Me, I?
And I, and I'm saying, we're putting out a thousand of them for this? We'll put a thousand of them out next year for voting, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Next.
I would just like to gently remind everybody, a lot of this is new to us and that we're, we're not, I, I don't have any decision made. This is what a first reading and a second. I've gotten emails and all that, so don't just assume that we're for or against or whatever. We're, we're here just to talk about it and, you know, I understand why you're upset by my meaning. So I just want to make sure everybody knows that.
Good morning. Frank Sundrum, eighteen twenty-nine West Thirtieth Street. This new development is going to join my property. And whatever privacy we have with the woods that are there now, what's left after the hurricane are going to be gone. We're going to have people looking down at us, and we're going to be looking up at one hundred and fifty-foot-high buildings, jammed, packed together. And just as a matter of thing, as the lady here brought up, and thank you, the flooding is going to be really bad. Until her, her neighborhood got put in, we did not have any flooding on West Thirtieth Street at all, even during hurricanes. Now, you get a heavy rain, properties across the street from me flood. The last hurricane we had, the water came up all the way up, almost touching the house and the driveway. Need serious mitigation there, which right now, unless you do serious mitigation, is not going to happen. That piece of property there changed the entire hydrologic, you know, drainage of the, of the neighborhood. Also, traffic. Traffic, as I've communicated with Ms. Halagus some time ago, is awful. Ever since they put the academy up on Sweet Bay, it is impossible to get through that light between seven and nine o'clock in the morning or between two and four without waiting ten minutes for a light. If there's an emergency or an accident, there's trouble now. What is the, what is the plan? Make it four-lane across all of Frankfurt and Airport Road? What is the plan? We don't know, it's just a blank. Then there's the people. We don't know what's coming, it's going to change the entire character of the neighborhood. Okay, this is not a good idea. This is not a good idea. And finally, just, I just want to circle back to one other thing. It does not fit the neighborhood, does not fit the neighborhood's wishes. And trust me on this, there will be heat. There will be concerns because you are changing the entire area. Sweet Bay in itself, and I've got a grudge against the airport, so don't get me started on that. But Sweet Bay in itself, they're good neighbors there. They're going to get a big, ugly gas station right in front of the neighborhoods. That's going to be a lot of fun, gentlemen. This thing is going to be worse. This thing is going to change that entire area. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Yeah.
You made it, I thought maybe you were going to leave.
I know how I got on that list. I worked for the military for thirty years, and if you see a clipboard and a sign-in sheet, you just sign it down.
You just do it.
Yeah, it must be meant to be. This, of course, is going to touch both D and E, annexing it to the city and then changing the use. I also live, Michelle Newsom, I'm sorry, eighteen thirty-four, West Thirtieth Street. I live across from Frank. We are in, this apartment complex is in an L shape. Frank and I are right in the crux of it. And when he says it's going to change the flooding, it's going to be remarkable how it's going to change. Now, the developer, when we went to the meeting with them at the church, said that the typographic, or at the zoning, excuse me, at the zoning, the typographic maps said the water is flowing out to the bay. That's true. But unless he's going to put that, those seven buildings, four stories high, holding three hundred and four apartments, unless he's going to put them on the marsh and the land out there without filling it in, I don't see how I can do it. He's going to have to put dirt in. It's going to change the whole section on Airport and the folks on Frankfurt. Obviously, my neighbors are upset, I'm upset. I thought this was my last home that I was going to have to buy. But you're going to change a whole residential area. The kids get out and ride bikes. You're not going to be able to do it, and, and we're, we're now not able to do it much with the traffic. You've got construction workers. You've got two hundred and fifty-nine more houses in Sweet Bay in the third phase coming in. That's two cars apiece, another, you know, just shy six hundred cars coming through there. Four hundred and eighty cars are planned for the apartment complex. I appreciate that Sweet Bay has its own two exits, but most people, or a great deal, I shouldn't say most, a lot of people come down Airport. And I wait four, four lights to get across many times the road. So it's a residential area. If, if the owner wants to build twenty-five more homes there, I'm happy for them. But to put in four stories when there is not hardly any apartment complexes, not even Sweet Bay's is four stories, right next to a home, my sunset will be thirty minutes before everybody else's, because I got a building that's going to block it. And so I heartfully ask that you don't approve either ten D or ten E.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you very much for listening.
Let everyone, everyone know that the, the Planning Board recommended denial unanimously. Okay, so, so just.
Another clap for Ray Devius and James Barker.
Okay.
Stephen Potter, two thousand eight, Duco Court. The change in this, the zoning and annexation would allow for up to four hundred and fifty units on this piece of property, while the developer's only stating three oh four. But it would allow, you can't, if he would qualify for four fifty after it was annexed, I don't know what recourse you would have if he met all your requirements. It would also allow for a hundred and fifty-foot heights, including mechanical areas, which is fifteen stories and not four. Traffic on, for multifamily units like this, with the allowable four hundred and fifty units, would, would be three and a half times what would be allowable under its current zoning as R one with the county. It'd be up to twenty, almost twenty-five hundred trips a day out of that community if the maximum number of units were to be developed on that property. There's, the, the property is, days designated right now is R one in Bay County. All the surrounding property, with the exception of Sweet Bay, is also designated R one either by Bay County or by the City of Panama City. So approval of this annexation and zoning change would create an island of, of incompatible use, in my opinion. So this is just some things to consider. The previous speakers has mentioned traffic, and they already have problems with that, and there is problems with most schools during pickup and drop-off times.
Every school in the city.
Every school in town. But it is just going to exacerbate that if this, if this property were annexed as requested. No, no problem annexing, annexing it as a residential, as it would be compatible with the rest of the neighborhood at that point. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, I want to say something. Don't, if he wants to speak, he can, yeah.
I think the developer wants to.
Yes.
Good morning, Commissioners, how are you doing? My name is Robert W. Browning. I'm the applicant and developer for the proposed apartment complex on Frankfurt Ave. I really appreciate you all taking the time to consider our project here, and a few points I'd like to make about the project. First off, staff supported this project and says that it is compatible with the surrounding area. Two hundred and fifty feet to the east of our site, there is industrial zoning currently in place, which allows unrestricted height. They can build any height. Three hundred and eighty feet to the south of this site, there are mobile homes in a very tight area existing already. Within eight hundred feet of this site, there is an awful lot of commercial-zoned property already. And of course, immediately to our north, there is Sweet Bay, which is a very intense P D, which has an approval for up to seven hundred thousand square feet of commercial space. I tell you, at the end of the day, this is an urban infill site. That's what it is. This is not all single-family surrounding this site. And you, as the city, already have paid for and have water, sewer, schools, and transportation in place to serve this project. Along with that, you're improving Frankfurt Ave and the Robinson Bayou Stormwater Project, which again is going to enhance the area for the ability of a project just like this. Second, and, and one more element I want to bring on is that when you look at the City of Panama City proper, there is virtually zero vacancy in multifamily right now. So I would argue that this is a great opportunity for the city to gain capacity in areas you already have all the utilities and all the improvements in place, minus the modifications that you plan to put in here through the improvements that you all have been discussing for Suzuki and other projects going in this area. And again, I appreciate your consideration on this, and I am here to answer any questions. And again, we would like to work with the community to make this project happen. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. William Harrison for the applicant. We would encourage your passage of the first reading of the annexation and the rezoning. You know, this is a frustrating process. We went to the Planning Board, we've got two Planning Board members here. You know, there's a lot of expense and a lot of time and effort that goes on behalf of the city and the developer in reviewing applications such as this. To get it to the Planning Board, we make the presentation. As the mayor points out, it was a five oh vote to deny it. It is aggravating and frustrating to go through this process. The Planning Board has absolutely no conversation whatsoever about the merits of this application. There's no conversation about the purpose of that application is to rezone. We're not there to design by neighborhood input. Certainly, the, the board has adopted a code which we have to comply with. There are statutory regulations. There are administrative regulations for stormwater, for utilities, all of which have to be complied with at the development order stage. It is not something that has to be complied with at the Planning Board stage in an application for a rezoning and for an annexation. As my client just pointed out, and I'm sure all of you are aware, there is a menagerie of uses within an eighth of a mile, a quarter of a mile, a half a mile, within yards, within a football field of this piece of property, is every different kind of use that is allowed in the City of Panama City. Where I live, and I travel less than a mile to my office, I pass all of these different uses except for industrial, from my home in the Cove to downtown. And we have all of these different uses, and particularly higher-dense uses, as is proposed here, in every section of our city. We have it in every neighborhood. Our request today is for you to approve by first reading the annexation and the rezoning. And to move forward, we can work through the issues, as has been spelled out. Some are project-specific, but most of these have nothing to do with the project, and they're outside of our purview. And we would appreciate an opportunity to come back at a later date and address those. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, would you read the?
Ordinance number three zero six eight point one, an ordinance of the city approving the voluntary annexation of fifteen acres of unincorporated property located at parcel ID number one three zero three seven dash zero 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 dash zero zero zero. Bay County, Florida, into the city as further defined here af, here and after, amending the wards and boundaries of the city to include said land and providing for an effective date.
Item ten E is for.
Listen, I know everybody's tired, but this is my only opportunity and platform to be able to discuss some of this. I just had a couple of questions. The, I'm assuming the reason for annexing in to us to begin with is just to get utilities?
Sure, water.
Okay. The other thing is, I just, the, the applicant is not the owner at this time, is that correct? Okay. The, the other thing is, there's some real, there's some real things that need to be touched on anyway. Like, forget the project for a minute. That area is really popular and exploding. Honestly, in addition, thankfully, because of Sweet Bay and the education system over there and things like that, it's been a real blessing to the city that that, that development was approved. But I am, I'm just a little bit, I'm thinking of all the traffic, you know, everybody's talking about. There are, there are things that are, that we need to be prepared for as we're growing and we're getting bigger, even with everything that's happening in Sweet Bay, and the desire for people to live in that area and develop in that area. We really should, to your point, we should be considering what we can do to improve Frankfurt Avenue. I mean, when she said there's no sidewalks there, that's just kind of shocking to me. I mean, that, that neighborhood, I know, and I know that some, a lot of you live in the county, not in the city. We would love for you to annex into the city, it makes your fight a lot stronger. No, I'm just kidding.
That's a problem, though.
Kinda.
It has a lot to do with it.
It does.
Most of that is county, so it's, it's difficult.
Yeah, it, it is kind of difficult, and not that you don't care about that, but it is, you know, anyway, that's not even what my point is. I, I do agree, though, we need to pay attention to, you know, and that road was never, I don't know where the four-lane thing came from, if there's any truth to that. I don't, I don't know anything about that, but, you know, I just want to, we should be considering what we can do to improve Frankfurt Avenue and whatever we can over there to make it better for the citizens, whether it's lighting or sidewalks or infrastructure, roads, whatever. And then the, the, okay, so I asked him that. I, I will say the way that Sweet Bay, we keep referring to Sweet Bay and, and what they've done and all that. If I can tell, what, from what I can tell, the Sweet Bay commercial part is really, and their apartment complex is really three ninety. That's their frontage. It's not the neighborhood.
That's right.
And I'm not disagreeing with your project necessarily, I haven't had any time to look into it. I just want to make sure we understand that when we say it's a yard or it's a step over there, this is, that this area is Frankfurt going down that's been residential there, that besides, you know, the industrial at the end that's been there for a lifetime. So I just wanted to kind of take in all that. I don't know what all that means, I just kind of want to throw it out there. And if anybody had anything else that they wanted to add to this, because we can't talk besides this, and the next two weeks will be a vote, and we'll meet and we'll talk, and I'm getting emails, but is there any input from, is this Josh's or Billy's?
This is mine, Billy's.
Okay, so do you have any input into this?
I'm on one side.
We're on one side.
We have to deal, regardless of what happens with this complex issue,
Sure.
we've got to deal with that road. We've got to deal with Frankfurt. We know that.
Well, that's what, that's what I'm saying, at the very least. At the very least, that's come out of it.
The traffic is hell over there already.
We have, I have, I've said that, and we know that. And, and, and I have tried to, I hope I have answered everybody's email. If I haven't, I humbly apologize. I think you know where I stand at this point, if you've received my emails. And, and I, I believe in responsible development, and that's where I am standing at this. And I don't, at this point, I, and no, I'm not taking sides. I don't see that it's responsible because of the infrastructure and the way the road is. And that's not the, the developer's fault, that's the city's fault for not being prepared for that. So that's where I'm at at this point. So I don't want anybody to get mad at me right now, because I, I have answered, I've answered, done my best to answer emails, and you, I'm sorry, but I, I've had a ton of them, and I, that, I would not have even gone to that meeting that night if I hadn't received a call. And it, it was just a neighborhood thing, and I got slammed to pieces for even walking in the door. I care. That's why I went.
You're paid the big bucks for it.
That's right. I care. I care deeply. I don't want to hurt my fam, my constituents, don't, don't hurt them. Go ahead.
I get that, I do. It was helpful to get the meeting minutes, I don't know if you guys saw them, we got them yesterday. And so I know we've got, I'm not aware of a four-laning project in Frankfurt Avenue. So, so I, what I, what I do know is that the county has agreed to participate with us in improving Frankfurt Avenue. Now, what that looks like, I think that's been my responses back to residents, is like, hey, let's shake this together, because Frankfurt is changing. And so the, what it was, I mean, we've got Suzuki that's happening there. We do have other developments at the north that has already been approved. So we're going to have to deal with these issues regardless. And so I, I think this is a great opportunity to force more into the dialogue. But to William, to William's point, and, you know, it, one of the things I do want the community to understand, the developer was under no obligation to present his plans to you. He could have just come to us and asked to annex in and this particular zoning. So I think what was happening here is the developer trying to be in good faith. Now, it may not be a project that anybody wants, it may not be a project that this commission can support, but what happened and what took place, I mean, the developer hadn't even had conversations with us before he reached out to the community and said, we want to have conversations with that. So I do want to point out to, to you specifically, that is rare. We don't see that very often, and I do want to acknowledge that I think they've been very open book with their plan. And so wherever we end up with in, in two weeks, I do think those points that both William has made as well as the developer has made is that there, there are people that are trying to work with the community, not against them. And, and so I just want that to kind of, to kind of be seen. And, and so I just want that to kind of, to kind of be seen and acknowledged too. And we're here to support. Obviously, you guys are residents that are already there, and so we're not looking to, you know, to change your backyard completely or, or anything else like that, but we, we do want to shape what the future of Frankfurt looks like together, and so.
So I have a question, though. I mean, I got tons of friends over there. I, besides Suzuki and the industrial stuff at the end, when you say it's changing, and I'm all about changing, you know, I am, but I don't see where, is there just a lot of undeveloped land I don't know about? I mean, this seems to be the only parcel that I've ever, that I've even noticed.
No, we've got more.
Is this the old Wolf property?
There's a, there's an apartment complex that's already to the north that's, that will be, it's already been approved.
And that's, that's zoned that way anyway, right?
And zoned that way anyway.
So they're, they're not even coming to us.
No, they're not even coming to us. And then, and then Sweet Bay itself has roads that are accessing from that. And the Marina project, although you're right, the commercial activity is mostly towards the three ninety side, the Marina project has a completely commercial component to it too, which will connect into Frankfurt.
So does that help or hurt? I mean, if we already know there's another complex going in, you know that the Marina's going in.
It means we got to deal with it.
It means you've got to have a quasi judicial public hearing to hear from everyone to determine whether or not the facts and the law meet. So.
Okay. So anyway, those were my, and really quick, people talked about doing other houses. If it's zoned R1, no matter how big it is, isn't it still just single family? They would have to have it platted up and all that. Okay. I, I'm just wondering if I was missing something on that. Okay.
Yeah, and just for clarification, a couple of things. One is, I did meet with the developer when he presented his proposal on this, and we talked about the infrastructure that was there, and certainly we have the water and sewer that is available. Goes right in front of his, that proposed property that is adequate and sufficient to be able to meet the needs of not only potentially this development, but also the other developments that Mr. Street just mentioned that's going to happen to the north. Second thing is, this, you just approved the Robinson Bay Storm Drain Basin. That is a major storm drain basin that actually goes by this property as well as many of the neighbors that are in the area. As, I'm, I'm sorry, I forgot your name, but this lady that just mentioned, even that development displaced water into other property, potentially even this potential, this property. As we all know, that as a developer does develop, proposes a development, they must manage all of their water on their own property before it goes into the community property, particularly in the stormwater basin that I just mentioned. As far as Frankfurt Avenue is concerned, Frankfurt Avenue is a multi-owned street. A portion of that is owned by the city of Panama City. A portion of that is owned by the county, and a portion of that is actually owned by the state, where it crosses three ninety. As we all know, three ninety is being widened to four lanes and DOT does. I'm sorry, six lanes, excuse me, thank you. Six lanes is being widened to six lanes to include a new traffic signal at the intersection of Frankfurt and three ninety, as well as multiple lanes that actually go north and south on Frankfurt Avenue from that intersection. That's all public, that's already been approved, it's already under construction, and that's the state of Florida doing that. There has been impressive growth that has taken place in the city of Panama City since the storm, all over the city, which is putting amazing stress on the infrastructure, which was never forecasted for this level of demand that is taking place all simultaneously. It's not just one area like Panama City. This, the totality of the city is being rebuilt, as well as being rebuilt internally from the damage from the storm and the uprooting of trees and all of the water and sewer projects that this commission has approved. So there's a lot of factors that are going on, and I think that, you know, one of the things that we've got to look at is that the city does have those obligations with regard to the infrastructure and the other services and utilities that are necessary. In partnership with the county, we'll be exploring how we can enhance that traffic that comes roughly in the area of twenty seventh street toward the, toward the intersection of three ninety. That needs to happen regardless, because it is way too much time already for people to have to wait at an intersection. Bay County manages all the traffic signalization for the, for, within the county, and we'll certainly be working with them on that. And I think that the three ninety project widening will help to accommodate a lot of the flow. That's just all of the dynamics that are taking place. We only have a professional services continuing contract with Baytown Engineering. They have no task orders on this with regard to Frankfurt Avenue or widening Frankfurt Avenue. There's no, no designs, no contemplation, no documents that support anything to widen Frankfurt to a four lane road. I don't know what will be necessary. I know that it's not going to be two lane, all the way up to all of a sudden this massive wide intersection at Frankfurt and, and three ninety, because something has to happen to relieve the pressure at least up to twenty seventh street, where a lot of convergent traffic takes place. Something needs to take place up to that point. But there is no contract in place, there's no task order with Baytown Engineering. That is the continuing services contract for all engineering that we do for any engineer that comes and applies with the city of Panama City.
And I will tell you at the meetings, though, he speaks as he has dealings with the city's department, and he helps you all on planning the infrastructure. That's what was told to me and to my neighbor, to our faces, Ron Hill. So evidently, you know.
He used to work for us. That's, that's all.
Well, I understand that, but now he's not working in the city of the, of the city's capacity, but he is telling everyone else that he has dealings with the city, and he knows what's going on with the infrastructure.
So you, you can talk to Johnny about that.
Yeah, I, I, that, that's, I don't, I can't, I can't explain why he would or not do that. I'm just telling you, the city of Panama City has a professional services continuing contract with Baytown Engineering, like we do for anyone, but we've never issued a task order, we've never assigned him anything to contemplate or do any engineering with regard to a four lane road.
He's getting something out of it.
Well, he, he works for the, he's not getting anything from the city. Nothing from the city at all.
So, all I want to say is I would like to meet with the developer to see, like, is it have to be this? Is there anything, you know, some conversations? And then I want the citizens to know that I take strong consideration in the fact that when you purchased your place, and y'all hear me say this all the time, when you purchased your place, the property next to you is R1, and that's hard for me. So we'll, I'll have some strong conversation, well, you know, I'd, I'd like to hear what the developer says, but just, you know, I know that's, that's a tough one when you buy your property.
This is ordinance number three zero six eight point two, an ordinance amending the comprehensive plan, future land use map of the city to reflect a land use designation of urban residential for a parcel, parcel of property located at ID number one three zero three seven dash zero 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 dash zero zero zero. Panama City, Florida, providing for repealer, providing for severability, providing for an effective date.
Mr. Mayor, I think.
I think William, did you want to say something?
Well, we've got two, we've got two more on the, on the zoning, so we still have?
Go ahead. I think Mr. Wood wants to speak.
Okay.
By the way, I know it's long, but I appreciate the dialogue, because this was a lot of information I, I wasn't aware of, especially the other apartment complex and all the things. I just didn't know all that.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, I, I wanted to speak as relates to this project with, on Airport in Frankfurt. Rufus Wood, nineteen eleven East Tenth Street. I'm, I'm very sensitive to the concerns of the citizens, the people that live in that area. I don't know any of them, but I'm very sensitive, because I live on Tenth Street, and right around the corner from me is Panama Commons, and there's ninety-two units there, and all of the same arguments that my brothers and sisters that came up spoke as relates to housing complex. We raised all of those same issues as relates to the infrastructure with flooding, there's problems with flooding. We brought that up prior to them approving that project, problems with traffic, and problems actually with the trash. We've had rats as a result of that project. Of course, that's been many years ago. I think Scott Clemens was commissioner at that time, but we made the same argument. So I'm, I'm very sensitive to their concerns. I just hope that you all would listen to the concerns of the people, because that is a single family housing area also, or was prior to that. Now, we have ninety-two units, and it's a four-story structure there, and then the Pace Foundation came back a few years after that and wanted to put ninety-two additional units there. Like I said, we already got problems with flooding. So I, I just rose to say that I'm very, very sensitive. I empathize and I sympathize with my brothers and sisters in that area. So I hope that y'all will listen to them, because I'm afraid that the same thing will probably happen again in our neighborhood. So I think that we need to listen to the citizens when they have these concerns, and this continues to come up. And I know as Mr. McQueen was just mentioning about infrastructure, that is a problem all around the city. So I just hope that you all would be sensitive to them, because we, we fought very hard, and they didn't listen to us, and we're still having those problems as relates to that unit, which is right around the corner from my house. So again, I'm sensitive to them, and I ask that y'all would listen to the citizens.
Thank you, Dr. Wood.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, just continuing on item-
Hold on for that one.
I'm sorry.
Sorry, Mark. William Harrison, again. Commissioner Allegas will be happy to talk about all of those things. There are a lot of issues, as you can see, that are in the neighborhood that have nothing to do with this project.
I know.
We're happy to talk about all of those. The city is moving in parallel track to address a lot of those issues, water, sewer, Frankfurt, you know, the intersection at three ninety, stormwater. We can't affect all of those things, but we're happy to, to do what we can to, to help resolve those issues. Let me just clarify, you know, in a, in a comment that was just made, this was presented at the planning board. These units are about two hundred and twenty thousand dollars per unit. And, and so the, i- if, if we look at the per unit cost and the value that is being brought into this project in comparison to, for example, the trailer park across the street, it's a very different type of atmosphere than, than what exists out there now. So we're happy to work with the city, with the staff, Public Works, planning, whatever it is, to work through the issues. If we need to make some modifications, we're happy to do that. Maybe we got ahead of, you know, our, our skis here in saying, look, this is kind of what we're thinking, and maybe we should have just come in and said, you know, sign us up for a different zone, and we want to annex. You know, the fault is on us, you know, i- if we're being too transparent with that. But we will work in good faith with you, with the commission, with the community, as is evidenced by the meetings that have already taken place, to work on all of this. And, and our goal is to be a good neighbor and to be an asset to the city, and we think ultimately it will be good for everybody. So I don't know if we need to set it for two weeks, or if we need to, understanding that we're going to work through a lot of these different issues, I don't think we can do that in two weeks, to be candid, but we're happy to take whatever time you need and want to, to work through all of this.
I'd like to take some time to work through this a little bit, because I, this is all new to me, besides the emails, so I'd like to. But I don't, I'll get on it. So I'll work through it the next two weeks if y'all want to keep it going.
Well, I, I think let's find out what date that would be with it. It would take some time. I think that you've heard the commission and certainly the citizens, and I think that if you could come back and recommend how long it would take for you to analyze, do some analysis on these topics. If it's a month, two months, whatever you need, just let me know, and I will present that back to the commission in two weeks when we have our regular-
Okay.
On what that date would be for the consideration. But I, my recommendation will be there will be no vote in two weeks.
All right. We're good with that.
And, and I'll offer the same thing. I mean, it's your transparency which makes me willing to meet with you guys, so I appreciate you guys doing that.
Yeah.
You really can't be too transparent.
No.
It doesn't work out, it does.
I'm going to tell you, it's very rare that you do meet people that are that transparent in this business, and I'm thankful for that. I'm thankful for, very thankful for that.
Tell them my line's floating.
Whether we approve of it or not, I'm very thankful for that.
Yeah.
And so I want, everybody could just say, Mr. McQueen has already just said we're not going to vote in two weeks on this. So.
That's fine with us.
If you wanted to let your neighbors know, is it Miss Diane?
Deanna.
Deanna, forgive me. No vote in two weeks.
That's okay, I said I have about three more flyers, three hundred more to pass out.
Yeah, it just gives you more time. I'm just kidding.
We're, we're good with that.
Send to William two. Send emails to William two.
All right, let's move on. We're at first reading.
Just kidding.
Wait till that now.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, let me move forward on item ten F, which is first reading of ordinance three zero six eight point three, amending the zoning map of the city to reflect a zoning designation of urban residential two, UR two, for the property located at Frankfurt Avenue, parcel ID number one three zero three seven dash zero 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 dash zero zero zero. As background information, it's the same as I shared in the annexation agenda request, and as such is the recommendation to conduct the first reading of the ordinance.
An ordinance, ordinance number three zero six eight point three, an ordinance zoning parcels of property located at parcel ID number one three zero three seven dash zero 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 dash zero zero zero. Panama City, Florida, having approximately fifteen acres, urban residential two, UR two, providing for severability and providing for an effective date.
Ms. Smith, did we read the ordinance draft for item ten E preceding? I just didn't remember if we-
I did.
Okay, got it. Thank you. Moving on with item ten G, which is first reading ordinance three zero six nine point one, amending the future land use map of the city to reflect a land use designation of residential for the property located at eight three one zero Old Majet Tower Road. As background information, this item was reviewed by the planning board on May ninth, twenty twenty-two, and the planning board recommended approval unanimously. With that, it's the recommendation that we conduct the first reading of the ordinance.
Ordinance number three zero six nine point one, an ordinance amending the comprehensive plan, future land use map of the city to reflect land use designation of residential for a parcel of property located at eight three one zero Old Majet Tower Road. Panama City, Florida, providing for a repealer, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
Item ten H is first reading of ordinance three zero six nine point two, amending the zoning map of the city to reflect a zoning designation of residential one, R1, for the property located at eight three one zero Old Majet Tower Road. As background information, it's the same as I shared in the future land use agenda request, and as such, it's the recommendation we conduct the first reading of the ordinance.
Ordinance number three zero six nine point two, an ordinance zoning parcels of property located at eight three one zero Old Majet Tower Road, Panama City, Florida, having approximately five acres, residential one, R1, providing for severability and providing for an effective date.
Item ten I is first reading of ordinance three zero seven zero point one, amending the future land use map of the city to reflect a land use designation of residential for the property located at seven one three East Tenth Court. As background information, this item was reviewed by the planning board on May ninth, twenty twenty-two, and the planning board recommended approval unanimously. With that, it's the recommendation we conduct the first reading of the ordinance.
Ordinance number three zero seven zero point one, an ordinance amending the comprehensive plan, future land use map of the city to reflect a land use designation of residential for a parcel of property located at seven one three East Tenth Court, Panama City, Florida, providing for repealer, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
Item ten J is first reading of ordinance three zero seven zero point two, amending the zoning map of the city to reflect a zoning designation of residential one, R1, for the property located at seven one three East Tenth Court. As background information, it's the same as I shared in the future land use agenda request, and as such is the recommendation we can, conduct the first reading of the ordinance.
Ordinance number three zero seven zero point two, an ordinance zoning parcels of property located at seven one three East Tenth Court, Panama City, Florida, having approximately zero point one one acres, residential one, R1, providing for severability, providing for an effective date.
Item ten K is first reading of ordinance three zero seven one point one, amending the future land use map of the city to reflect a land use designation of mixed use for the property located at one five zero three Frankfurt Avenue. As background information, this item was reviewed by the planning board on May ninth, twenty twenty-two, and the planning board recommended approval unanimously. With that, it's the recommendation we conduct the first reading of the ordinance.
Ordinance number three zero seven one point one, an ordinance amending the future comprehensive plan, future land use map of the city to reflect a land use designation of mixed use for parcels of property located at one five zero three Frankfurt Avenue, Panama City, Florida, providing for repealer, providing for severability, providing for an effective date.
Item ten L is first reading of ordinance three zero seven one point two, amending the zoning map of the city to reflect a zoning designation of mixed use two, MU two, for the property located at one five zero three Frankfurt Avenue. As background information, it's the same as I shared in the future land use agenda request, and as such is the recommendation to conduct the first reading of the ordinance.
Ordinance number three zero seven one point two, an ordinance zoning parcels of Ordinance number 3071.2, an ordinance zoning parcels of property located at 1503 Frankfurt Avenue, Panama City, Florida, having approximately 0.21 acres, mixed use two, MU2, providing for severability and providing for an effective date.
Item 10M is the first reading of ordinance 3072.1, amending the future land use map of the city to reflect a land use designation of urban residential for the property located at 1604 Chestnut Avenue. As background information, this item was reviewed by the planning board on May 9th, 2022. And the planning board recommended approval unanimously. With that, it's the recommendation we conduct the first reading of the ordinance.
Ordinance number 3072.1, an ordinance amending the comprehensive plan, future land use map of the city to reflect a land use designation of urban residential for a parcel of property located at 1604 Chestnut Avenue, Panama City, Florida, providing for a repealer, providing for severability and providing for an effective date.
Item 10N is the first reading of ordinance 3072.2, amending the zoning map of the city to reflect a zoning designation of urban residential two, UR2, for the property located at 1604 Chestnut Avenue. As background information, it's the same as I shared earlier in the future land use agenda request. And as such, it's the recommendation we conduct the first reading of the ordinance.
Ordinance number 3072.2, an ordinance zoning parcels of property located at 1604 Chestnut Avenue, Panama City, Florida, having approximately 1.06 acres, urban residential two, UR2, providing for severability and providing for an effective date.
Item 10O is first reading ordinance 3073.1, amending the future land use map of the city to reflect a land use designation of urban residential for the property located at 2900 West 16th Street. As background information, this item was reviewed by the planning board on May 9th, 2022. And the planning board recommended approval unanimously. With that, it's the recommendation we conduct the first reading of the ordinance.
Ordinance number 3073.1, an ordinance amending the comprehensive plan, future land use map of the city to reflect a land use designation of urban residential for a parcel of property located at 2900 West 16th Street, Panama City, Florida, providing for repealer, providing for severability and providing for an effective date.
Item 10P is the first reading of ordinance 3073.2, amending the zoning map of the city to reflect a zoning designation of urban residential two, UR2, for the property located at 2900 West 16th Street. As background information, it's the same as I shared earlier in the future land use agenda request. And as such, it's the recommendation to conduct the first reading of the ordinance.
Ordinance number 3073.2, an ordinance zoning parcels of property located at 2900 West 16th Street, Panama City, Florida, having approximately 0.53 acres, urban residential two, UR2, providing for severability and providing for an effective date.
Item 10Q is first reading ordinance 3074.1, amending the future land use map of the city to reflect a land use designation of mixed use for the property located at 2913 East 5th Court. As background information, this item was reviewed by the planning board on May 9th, 2022. And the planning board recommended approval unanimously. With that, the recommendation is to conduct the first reading of the ordinance.
Ordinance number 3074.1, an ordinance amending the comprehensive plan, future land use map of the city to reflect a land use designation of mixed use for parcels of property located at 2913 East 5th Court, Panama City, Florida, providing for repealer, providing for severability, providing for an effective date.
Item 10R is first reading ordinance 3074.2, amending the zoning map of the city to reflect a zoning designation of mixed use two, MU2, for the property located at 2913 East 5th Court. As background information, it's the same as I shared earlier in the future land use agenda request. And as such, it's the recommendation to conduct the first reading of the ordinance.
Ordinance number 3074.2, an ordinance zoning parcels of property located at 2913 East 5th Court, Panama City, Florida, having approximately 0.59 acres, mixed use two, MU2, providing for severability and providing for an effective date.
Item 10S is the first reading of ordinance 3076 for Chapter 9 of the Drainage and Flood Damage Prevention Ordinance Amendment. In your packet, you'll see that there is the updated ordinance, which has two significant changes to it. One is to increase the one foot above the base flood elevation and one foot above the crown of the road to two feet above the base elevation and two feet above the crown of the road. And secondly, fill placed within special flood hazard areas, Area A and Area AE shall result in no net loss of natural floodplain storage. The volume of the loss of floodwater storage due to filling shall be offset by providing a equal one-to-one ratio of volume of flood storage by evacuation or other compensatory measures at or adjacent to the development site. With that, it's our recommendation that we move forward with the first reading of ordinance number 3076 for Chapter 9 of the Drainage and Flood Damage Prevention Ordinance Amendment.
Read it first. Let him read the ordinance and you can talk.
Ordinance number 3076, an ordinance by the city of Panama City, Florida, amending Chapter 9 Drainage and Flood Damage Prevention, adding definitions, providing for additional requirements in the special flood hazard areas, adopting technical amendments to the Florida Building Code, providing for applicability, repealer, severability, and an effective date.
Derek Thomas, 1100 West 10th Street. I was interested to find out, is there any way to address things that have already happened? People that have already filled in what used to be part of the drainage system and now no longer is and is affecting other people's properties? Is there any way to address those issues that are created by what's already happened in the past?
Not other than the normal ways that have already been addressed for any other property. I know that you've brought forth a couple of concerns on some property adjacent to you, but this would not be retroactive to that.
Okay. So, is there any way to address the flooding issue in my neighborhood that's occurred because of that? Because I live at the bottom of the bowl with 50 properties and there's a two-foot diameter pipe, four feet below the height of the road that's two feet below the height of my crawl space and my house. And when it rains, the crawl space becomes flooded. And now I'm stuck with the issue of having to put dirt into the crawl space to raise it up when 60 feet away from my property, upriver of my property is a drain that no longer functions. And that has had serious effects on the neighborhood and many other properties. And there used to be an area so that when all four of the drains at that corner overflowed, the water would move next to the drain. And there was an area the size of an Olympic-sized swimming pool. The ditch went all the way from one end of the block to the other. And because, just through gravity, it moved to the drain. And when it could, you know, in hurricane, there would be a huge amount of water there and within 15 minutes it would be gone. Now, it's still draining from the rain we had, you know, several days ago in my neighborhood. And it affects the height of the water table. It used to be three, four feet below the height of the road. Now, it's six inches below the height of the road for a week afterwards. It's like if the water doesn't evaporate because of the sun, it just doesn't, it doesn't move out of the neighborhood. So, you have two valleys coming together and the water comes up right out of the ground. And it has to climb uphill almost two feet before it can get to the two-foot-wide ditch that runs along the edge of the property. And it just, there's no way for the water to gather next to the drain. So, there's no area for the water to move into the drain. If it doesn't move into the drain, originally it just backs up and floods the entire block. And it's creating serious issues for.
It didn't happen before the hurricane?
That happened, yeah, that happened before the hurricane, eight years ago, when it was cemented shut by the city. And then a year and a half ago, when they came in and brought in $13,774 worth of dirt and raised up the entire property. So, there's now no longer a swath to move the water when it overflows the drains.
Have we have anybody gone and looked at this already?
I can address this. Yeah. We've addressed this multiple times with Mr. Thomas. I've got a six-page memo that includes all of our staff investigation, every allegation he's made that that drainage inlet has been cemented shut. It was. We removed it. We realized that. That was years and years ago before any of us were ever a part of the city. We've done exhaustive research and everything the city's got there is functioning like it should be. We realize that he's got an issue that was created by a private property developer. It's really a matter for civil court. I know Mr. Thomas has attempted to get code enforcement involved in this. It's not, it's a civil matter at this point.
Well, 70 years ago, there was an easement on seven different properties that provided drainage for the entire neighborhood. And now there's no longer any easement or anything else.
We've been through this repetitively, sir.
Word, Jern.